Okay, guys. I'm going to call meeting to order. People get started, everyone's probably aware we've got some public hearings that we're going to be opening tonight. And I'll be going over the, we don't get really formal about the rules, we just ask that any questions about the regulations being directed to the chair. I'll bring everybody to see this. Let's hold off and open the meeting for a moment. How are we doing now?
Oh, we are, okay.
We have experts on. I'm going to call meeting to order. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. So we do have a public hearing on the agenda. I'll open the room before we go to the public hearing. We have some of us keeping it first. First of all, we have all our regular members here. So we, just of note, Justin Rando is here via Zoom, as is Larry Fratson.
You want to get your job in very.
Okay. But Larry isn't open, and he won't be seated because all the regular members are here this evening. John, any changes to the agenda?
Uh, no changes.
Okay. On the minutes of May thirteenth, twenty twenty four, any corrections or amendments? All seconds, all in the paper. I oppose abstentions. Okay, that's unanimous. Any subsidements? Is there anything anyone would like to bring to the agenda? Hey, we're going to get into the, go out of our regular meeting mode and open the public hearing. First, we have three public hearings scheduled today. You can help me start. If you could, we, I'm assuming there's going to be a fair number of comments. We keep them to a couple of minutes. We have three chairs. We really want to hear what people have to say about this. And please announce, I wish to be recognized from the chair, I myself, and then state your name and your address if you could, and then you're free to speak and give us your thoughts. So we have three separate public hearings. I'm going to just give you an overview of the three, then I'll open the first public hearing. The one is, voting amendment, robotic section. Of parts of section twenty one fifty two and eliminate parts of section fifty two for multi-family dwellings. The third, the second one, John, would you suggest we open all three of these at once or just go one at a time?
Um, I just, I think it's probably fine because they're all sort of along the same lines. If, you know, members of the public want to testify on one or multiple, you could have all three open at once. It's fine.
Yeah, that's how we'll proceed here. Now, I'm not formally the opening of the public hearing. So we'll be opening the public hearing for the town of Columbia zoning amendment application to revise sections. Revise sections twenty one, point two, point three, eleven, to replace section fifty two, point seven, point one, nine, eliminate section fifty two, point seven, point two, one, for multi-family dwellings. Also, I am six point two on our agenda is a zoning amendment application to revise section eight, point three, for accessory dwelling units and in two family dwellings. And then also town of Columbia, a zoning amendment application to revise section nine, definition of structure. That said, we're going to open the public hearing. I'm going to, we did have a subcommittee that met over many months, many meetings. We did have two members of the public. That I want to thank for their input, who attended, I believe, every one of those subcommittee meetings. I just missed our last subcommittee meeting. Pat Chinchik and Monica Kincaid, they came and gave us valuable input, and we have a very open process. When we do have a subcommittee meeting, we notice it, there's a take minutes, there's an agenda. And the public's welcome, and we were very informal about who can speak at those meetings. We do want to hear from people. So if we're ever proposing a regular regulation change, and it isn't a formalized process until it gets to this point. The public's welcome. So that said, we've opened these public hearings. I'm going to ask Justin to, because he was the chair of the subcommittee. There were three of us, Mr. Tabor, myself, and Justin, Mr. Rando. Who went through the process, and he'll give the overview. Before his words, Justin.
All right. Thanks, everybody, and hopefully you can see my screen. I personally want to apologize for not being there in person. Looks like we have a good crowd, and I really appreciate everyone coming in. I appreciate the commission. And their thoughtfulness, and, you know, we've talked about this over a couple of meetings, two meetings, and more, several meetings. The members of the public, I just want to reiterate what Rick said. This has been a collaborative effort. And I just want to go through very quickly, just kind of an overview specifically with the multi-family and the accessory dwelling unit. I promise not to bore you too much. I'll go through this as quickly as possible because I know that some of you have seen something similar before, but I just want to lay the foundation on what we're proposing. Obviously, nothing is set in stone at this point. This is why we have the public hearing. It's important to get everybody's input. And if there's any, Rick or Mary Kay or John, if there's any input or problems with the audio or video, just let me know, please. All right. So why are we doing this? We're doing this, basically, this is kind of the mission statement from the regulation proposals to provide for a broader and more affordable variety of housing and development pattern. By permitting an increase in density within the development and allowing alternative housing types with a site design that is in harmony with and preserves natural scenic and historic site design features. And to provide incentives and opportunities for the creation of affordable housing. So that's kind of like a mission statement. I want to talk a little bit more specifically on some of those points, what it is, and more importantly, what it isn't. So we'll talk about that as we go along. Really, why are we doing this? Retention of our residents through a better variety of housing options. We have a lot of single-family homes on lots. And as, you know, this was really spawned by discussions around the council on aging, around retirees, around keeping our residents here. Maybe as they get older and have mobility issues and they, you know, they don't need the two thousand square foot home, two level, they want something a little bit smaller and in a different style. So really, that's, that was kind of the nucleus of this and why, one of the reasons why it was proposed. Identifying improved confusing redundant and overlapping regulatory sets, as Rick mentioned, this is really, there's, there's two regulations which we'll talk about, which we're kind of putting into one. So this isn't brand new. This is something that, in a multi-family piece and a, and a. Over the age of fifty five development type of piece that's been around for some time, but because of the duplicative nature of some of the regulations, we just cleaned it up. So that was a big part of what we did. And then staying ahead of national trends that the state of Connecticut has already put a focus on, and we want to do it under our control and our timeline. And we'll talk a little bit about that here in a second. So how we did it was a collaboration with multiple groups. This was a great, great exercise. We had a lot of input from the public. I don't want to repeat what Rick said. What he said was, was spot on. We had a lot of great interactions. And did this through the subcommittee process and then introduced it to the larger commission over a few meetings. So the first thing that we did was reviewed all applicable current regulations. So as Rick had mentioned, the current neighborhood retirement housing. And the current multi-family dwelling regulations. Both of those are, as they stand currently, before any changes or proposed changes, they're currently on the books. The state of Connecticut mandated that we have multi-family regulations, so we have those now. So what we did is we reviewed everything in a holistic manner and cleaned them up where we needed to. And I think made them smarter and improved them a little bit. Accessory living units was the other piece of this, the third piece. So that's a regulation that's been on the books as well. Which allowed for attached in-law apartment type of residences already, which we've had for some time, and we expanded that a little bit, which we'll, we'll go over here in just a second. So it was really a review and update of those regulations in a comprehensive manner. We wanted to avoid arbitrary and burdensome requirements on our residents and also kind of pull to that core of allowing people to ask permission, basically, to have different types of living arrangements with, through the multi-family piece. So the neighborhood housing and multi, current multi-family were consolidated in this draft. Like I said, they were duplicative in several respects. Some of the things they were redundant, we didn't have to have them in the text, so we were able to physically. Change that text and shorten it a little bit, make it easier to understand. And then now that makes up the fifty two, seven, nineteen, multi-family dwellings. It also takes advantage of some things that are already on the books through the state of Connecticut, which we'll talk about, about density incentives. The accessory dwelling units was broadened to recognize reasonable and applicable, applicable ADU projects, mainly detached ADUs, which we'll talk briefly about. And that now makes up the accessory dwelling units and two family dwelling proposal that we're talking about. So if we stick with the multi-family, just talk a little bit of detail on that, regulates projects basically with three or more dwellings and a higher density configuration. Now, when we look at the residential agricultural zone, which is where most of us live in town, that would require a special permit, which means kind of what we're going through today. We'd need to, to present that to the public. If someone wanted to do that, a project that falls under, under that regulation. The, the public would have input, and then we could require conditions on approval of that. So there's lots of checks and balances in place. In the commercial zone, it would be by site plan, which is a little bit different, different process. But still checks and balances there. It still would have to come through the appropriate channels. So the other thing that we did through this was better define the lake overlay zone. So we don't have a lake zone in town, but we have an overlay around the lake. And the reason for this, Rick is very articulate in explaining this, but we have a lake that we want to preserve. We're not opposed to having multi-family projects eventually in that area. It's just that we wanted to take a conservative approach with this. And make sure that we were doing things in reasonable steps. So right now, as it's proposed, the multi-family would not be allowed in that lake overlay area or zone. We removed the age restrictions from the original regulation around neighborhood housing. So it was fifty five and older was the only thing it was applicable to, and we know that there's issues both with young and old, even though kind of the nucleus of this was with retirees and older folks, but. We wanted to make it broader in that respect. And then we did add an affordable housing incentive utilizing general existing state statutes. Basically, what this does, if I can explain it really quickly, is if someone were to come to us and say, we want to engage in this multi-family regulation, we want to build a project, they would have to go through their, their processes to determine on that particular piece of land, how many units it would sustain. So if they were to go through this affordability incentive, which basically takes the, the regional income level. And if the developer or the manager of that project sells or rents to a certain percentage below that, and they report on it, there's a whole reporting structure to the town, there's a bunch of things that they have to do. Then they can get a hundred percent of that calculated density. So if they calculated it, said, we can get put ten units on this piece of property, and they went through the public hearing process, and there's no issues or anything like that. They could possibly take advantage of the ten units or the hundred percent density if they followed those rules already put forth by the, the state statutes. If they wanted to do just market rate and not do that, then they would have, they could take advantage of seventy percent of the calculated density. So just random round numbers. If it was ten, then they would be able to build seven. This is not, this has been one of the controversial parts. This is not traditional, like low income. There's a lot of misnomers. This is taking kind of an already high median income in this area. And allowing an incentive for, for a little bit higher density, take advantage of the maximum density that that area will allow, soils will allow and all of the septic and everything. So that they, they can pass that down to, to the eventual owners or renters. Minimum lot requirement size, one hundred fifty thousand square feet, just some, this is just a, you know, touching on a lot of the details. Strong language around fire marshal and chief review and recommendations. This is one of the best things that came out of this exercise. We worked very closely with fire department. Fire department, fire marshal to, to get some processes in place for this that would do a really good fire marshal review, and it really expanded beyond this, too. I was very happy with how those conversations went. And then all other requirements are derived through scientific or practical methods in conjunction with testing and permitting. That's not doing it justice because there's a lot of details, but I wanted to go through this kind of quick. The accessory dwelling unit. Yeah, go ahead. Someone have a question?
Before you go to the accessory dwelling unit, I just wanted to explain to the public, instead of coming up with a number of potential units per acre that we might allow, based on a, a number that we might have a hard time just upon. We realized there are probably some severe limitations on the land that's available in Columbia in terms of its ability to support very high density development. So we're taking a science-based approach, saying, if you can engineer. Five units per acre or six units per acre, then that's, if you can demonstrate that, then seventy percent of that is what you can do for market rate housing. As opposed to saying, yes, you can do six units per acre, or yes, you can do four units, or yes, you can do eight units. I don't think any land in Columbia would support eight units per acre and have a septic system and wells. So we realized there was a terminal limit on the number of units that we can fit on the kind of land that we have here with high water tables and things. So I just wanted to add that at this part. So we think a very neutral, science-based approach.
Yeah, there's one pet peeve I can speak for myself, and that's arbitrary numbers. You know, sometimes we do that through regulations, and we, well, where did these numbers come from? We don't know. We just threw a dart at a dartboard, right? So we, we took a very scientific approach to this. I won't repeat everything Rick said, but it's, it's worth noting that this is, I think, it's. An interesting way to approach it. I think it's the right way to approach it. But so ADUs and two families. So current regulations allow attached accessory living units. Updated regulations would allow a detached accessory living unit and better define the two-family dwelling. So basically, the multi-family proposal kicks in for three or more units, and then you have the accessory dwelling unit if you had a duplex essentially. Now, the detached accessory dwelling units, there's obviously some restrictions on that. It's not, not a free-for-all or anything like that. So the size of that accessory dwelling unit detached would be thirty percent of the floor area of the primary structure. If it's two thousand square feet or larger, it makes sense that the larger house you have are the primary structure, that you don't, you're not completely limited to a very, very tiny house or accessory dwelling unit. But if your main dwelling is under two thousand square feet, then you're limited to a maximum of seven hundred fifty square feet. So that, that was one of the, the checks and balances put into there. All other requirements are still derived through health code, other permitting, scientific methods, kind of what Rick, Rick said. There's a lot to that, but. But we, we wanted to make sure that it made sense as to why the numbers were what they were and what we were allowing. So this is where, I'm almost done. I want to, first of all, say what this is not. Rick did a great job of explaining that we have natural limitations in town. We do not have sewer, public sewers, public water. We don't have great soils. Those in and of themselves are going to be natural limitations for what this is. This is essentially giving people the permission to ask, or the, the option to ask permission to do something multi-family in a little bit denser configuration. So that people like my parents, who are, my mother's turning eighty tomorrow, might have a little bit of an easier time getting around in a different type of smaller dwelling in a, in a different type of configuration. I do not see this creating sprawl, sprawl, sprawled blight, out of control madness. You know, we're not going to turn Columbia into suburban, urban wasteland. Again, we don't have the infrastructure. We don't have the interstate, the major highways that'll influence development right here. We have those natural limitations around soil topography, septic and well. And health codes, building codes, you know, the fire codes, everything that goes along with it. You know, we're definitely not under-regulated in those areas. The special permitting process will put checks and balances on any developer. You know, what if things change in five years? And we see this going in a direction that we don't want it to go. Well, that's our job. We need to make sure that we keep track of that as a commission. And make sure that we, that we adjust as we need to. But right now, in our current situation, I feel this is a very reasonable proposal. Not this. I, I'm on a work trip to Indianapolis. I come here probably once every couple of months. I'm actually, didn't do this on purpose, but this is where I'm at. Right near this location, northern Indianapolis, Farmall, Indiana. This has just been one of those areas where it has been growing and growing exponentially because of the area that it's in, the availability of land, the soils, the tech that's coming into the area. People are moving into here like crazy. All of this area used to be farmland twenty years ago, fifteen years ago, eight years ago, and now it's not. I think what the proposal is, is it gives people a higher level of freedom to choose their living situation if they so choose. It's a need to recognize connective demographic shift. And it simply allows people ask permission to engage in these multi-family projects. You know, people are moving out of Connecticut, and retirees are not retiring here at the same level that they are other places. And a lot of the reason for that is their housing options, and we want to keep those folks here. And what's nice about this is we do not have to use our imagination. There's stuff around us right now that's utilizing this. This is an example in Eastford, Connecticut, in the Hancock Farms. I just drove by there yesterday, taking another look at it. Started out as a few small duplex in a tighter configuration, very, very rural setting and is in great harmony with the area. Over the past six or seven or eight years or so, they've expanded a little bit. I encourage anybody to drive by there. It's a really, really good example of something that could possibly work in, in Columbia. It's Chaplain Woods and Chaplet, drag down the road, just right down on Route Six, probably driven by it many times, same type of deal, multi-family, tighter configuration. And both of those examples, no public sewers, no public water. And that's why we picked them. And there are other examples of that as well. But again, those are our natural limiters and things that, that we need to take into consideration. So I want to do that really quick. I appreciate the time to, to present that and truly. I'm, you know, very, very happy to see that, that everyone is here and participating in this, and this is a group effort. So thank you very much for the, the citizens for coming in. Thank you.
John, at this point, I'm going to ask, um, Paul Faver, myself, any thoughts that we had as subcommittee members, then I'm going to move on to you, John, ask you for any comments that you have, and I'd like to open it up to the commission, briefly comment on it. I do want to emphasize the commission. If I've had any numbers people contacting me about this proposal. Prior to the public hearing, on once this public hearing is open, you can have any sort of information come to us. It's not through the public hearing, just to emphasize that to the two committee members. Any thoughts from the process and on the concept wall? Swear, I just faded. I'm good with it. I support it. Just a few thoughts from myself, you know. Heartbroken at how difficult it is for somebody to afford to build a living unit in Connecticut. The, the building codes have changed dramatically, even the last round of building codes that came into effect last October first have added between twenty five and thirty five thousand dollars for the cost of building any living unit anywhere. Based on energy requirements, and there, it's a good thing, but it's also expensive. So it costs a lot to live here. So what can we do on a local level? To make our housing, our potential new housing stock more affordable, and then other considerations, accommodating people that need help with loved ones that are. Want to stay in the area and creating affordable accessory dwelling units. Not affordable by the federal definition. I mean, affordable, you want, you want to add an accessory dwelling unit. We have had in place a very visionary accessory dwelling unit. Regulation for several years, more so than any town I've seen around. It was by right. You could just add an accessory dwelling unit. We're expanding on that concept. We said, as we expanded that. Now, well, that's really where we're making the potential for many homes in the RA district to be two-family. Now, understand what this is not, that I would just want to reinforce. So we're taking lots of one hundred and fifty thousand square feet, almost four acres, not quite. For multi-family potential development for larger scale developments. If you're an existing one and a half acre lot in an RA district. The multi-family doesn't apply to you. If you're a two-acre lot, two and a half acre lot, doesn't apply to you. This applies to larger lots. Existing lots, we're trying to give people a lot more room to accommodate. Another living unit, and we don't want to put restrictions, at least the subcommittee didn't, want to put restrictions on who could live there. In the town of Winter, next town over, you can take a single-family house and convert it to two-family in essence. Via calling it an accessory dwelling unit, but the owner has to live there. So we're not. We, we really take the approach, what rule can we get rid of that we don't need? You know, how do we give people a right to use their land the way they want to, but we don't really want to create something that takes away from their neighbors. And that's what public hearing, we want to hear what you have to say about it. So that's all I'll say on this at this point. The rest are technical revisions of structures so that it will be easier. We're always taking a look and saying, well, where can we get rid of some of our regulations if we don't really need them? You know, how do we make this a process that's easier to understand? Can you go to our regulations and not have to look in five different places to understand what you can do with your land? How can you go to one place and our regulation and understand it and make it really, really concrete so that there's no difference in interpretation between our zoning agent and what the public would think about that regulation? Common sense approach. Very, we've done some very good work here, and we do want to hear what everyone has to say. John, any thoughts on this?
Um, well, lots of thoughts, but I, I'll, I'll be very brief. I, I think this is probably a more important philosophical change to the regulations than I think it will be. A, a physical change to the town in, in the near future. I think, you know, change will happen slowly, and that's mostly due to the market and the difficult, the expensive building and the difficulty of building in Columbia in general. So I don't think if this passes, there will suddenly be thousands of units on the, on the drawing board. A lot of this language has already existed in the regulations. As Justin said, there was, we had a multi-family regulation in the commercial district, and we had a, a retirement housing regulation already on the books. This consolidated a lot of that, and I think simplified a lot of it. So it does not represent a, a huge change in, in regulatory direction, but opening it up to more areas of town and to broader ages and broader income spectrum. I, is an important philosoph, philosophical change that I, that I think is an important one. And I'll, I'll, I'll leave it there.
Um, initial members, any thoughts that I can open this up to the public?
Really, my, the, the only question we had, I saw the seven hundred and fifty square foot limit. I thought we had talked about nine hundred square feet.
We threw a bunch of different numbers out. That's what we want to hear about through the public hearing process. That's seven hundred and fifty. I've had people throw out other numbers that they felt a minimum number of eight hundred would be advisable, because accessory dwelling units, if you're going to have a family member move with you, then that need, you need for a caretaker or two. Assuming, well, let's not assume people are married, but two sets of parents. or two, assuming, well, let's not assume people are married, but two sets of parents uh, living in, in accessory dwellings. And then, a lot of thoughts, heard a lot. At this point, I can only hear it through the public hearing process. We'll be very careful about understanding what the public wants, if you wanna hear what you have to say. Wanna open this?
Tom, that is, that is just for a primary residence of two thousand square feet or less. So, okay, it, it, it is larger.
Larger, which sounds like, okay.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, and firsthand, though.
Carol Cabala, thirty-seven Lake Road, I'm very much in favor of the changes on eight point three numbers to ask. I would prefer the nine hundred on the under two thousand. That was the figure that was on, in what I read, uh, versus the seven fifty. I wanted to know, um, where, where the, if you have a minimum, I don't remember what they are. Minimums for a put into the house that can be built in Columbia or a maximum?
I don't believe there's any minimum in the longer by state statute, is that correct, John? So, whatever minimum we have on our books is not legally enforceable number.
And maximum?
Uh, we don't have a.
You don't have a maximum. So, when you were talking for uh, homes that are over two thousand square feet, where was the thirty percent? Where did that come from? You might have said, and I listed. I'm a little bit curious about that. Uh, some people have very small homes, and of course, I guess you don't want them to be building an accessory apartment that is bigger, you know, detached than your home. But also, if you have someone that have four thousand square feet, or somebody that have five thousand square feet, and I'm not sure how that runs, the thirty percent could be very much larger than somebody under the two thousand.
So, you want to weigh in or?
I, so that is essentially the case.
Yeah. And that will, and, and could have been happened. Yeah, except that, except that if you know the house is two thousand one square feet, if the thirty percent is on six hundred square feet, which is less than seven fifty, it would add if the house was less than two thousand.
And I'm thinking that, that if we put in the, you put a, a size on a phone that's on the something hundred square feet, I'm sure there may be not a lot of that many houses in Columbia that are, but mine is one.
You know, there are a lot of, a lot of one thousand one hundred square foot ranches. We did in the wood, and there's a thought, just to explain the thought process. Uh, we went back and forth between ourselves and other members of the public, saying, okay, what are the needs as opposed to, and how can we possibly not dramatically change the complexion of neighborhoods? How would I feel if I'm in a neighborhood, a very small home, playing with a sudden monstrous addition got put on, this kind of out of character, we're not supposed to use the word character, but I'm gonna use it anyway, out of character with the neighborhood? So, and do we want to dramatically change the complexion of neighborhoods? You know, are we looking for, we, we try not to become California where everybody seems to plonk a shed in the backyard to rent it out as we're trying to recover some money? So, this was, we're, we're trying to address what we felt were real needs in the community for the potential to have other living space developed without putting a lot of rules into who you could do it. You could theoretically put an accessory dwelling unit on and rent it out. That's, we don't wanna get into that, you know, as a group, the three of us uh, on the subcommittee felt that's just not a level of regulation that we were looking to approach. I mean, I'm gonna say it again, we're Colombian. This is like a live and let live town, as much as we can do that.
Yes, there was one more thing about that, that I would, I'm sorry, that there were a cap on the size of that accessory.
On the smaller houses.
On the larger houses.
Um, well, so we, we're in essence allowing, you, so the, the thought, just to, not defending, but just explaining, we did discuss it, so I'd like to explain it. So, the thought process is, why do we need to? That was our, our mindset. Why do we need to weigh in on that if they could have built it that large anyway to begin with? You know, because you're still governed by the, the lot coverage limitations on a, on a lot. So, they, they could have built it that big and it could have been a one family house. So, but, but to have that full separate um, living situation, we did still want it to be accessory in general, as opposed to pure two, two family where, from within the accessory dwelling regulation. Any other comments or questions?
Thank you.
Good.
Um, Lily Randi. I'm ready. Um, there were questions, but some go to what Carol was talking about. What is the law limitation as far as footprints of buildings?
Is ten percent on conforming lots? And it can theoretically go up to fifteen percent on non-conforming lots, assuming smaller and not, non-conforming lots. There are also setback regulations that dictate that. There's well locations, septic system locations, there's a lot of things that affect potential size of structure design.
Okay, I, I do understand that. Thank you. I have a um, two thousand six hundred and ninety square foot house. I'm too happy. So, thirty percent, if we were able to find an occasion to do a detached accessory dwelling unit, I could only build it at eight hundred and seventy square feet.
According to this report.
According to this, yeah. So, assuming that I could meet that, but.
You can currently build that size pretty much under the current regulations. In years. Or maybe you need to. Well, yeah, we, as you did, the current accessory dwelling unit regulation allows you to build up to thirty percent of your primary twelve unit size.
Thirty percent of my primary twelve would be under the seventy.
So, you could build that size under current rate.
So, so I could build that. But that's not necessarily a very large home, which is fine. If they accommodate two bedrooms, and I needed to be coordinated to think about some of what you already said is that you might have two unrelated, like the siblings wanting to live together, being able to force together if you need to have two bedrooms. You might have people who are in wheelchairs. You might be caretaker in one bedroom, another person in another room. And your seven hundred and fifty four thousand square foot is limited. Um, it's also limiting for maybe, you know, twenty-six ninety.
So, you'd like us to consider a larger number?
I would like to see.
What number would be?
I did, I go to get floor plans, work in house plans, that sort of thing. Eight fifty, kind of seems like a magic number for a two bedroom house. And I pulled out the Columbia, whatever, this, the Affordable Housing Plan from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-seven. And there's a lot of great data in here, which I'm sure you will hold though. Um, but it breaks down in the houses, types of units that are here in Columbia. And Columbia already has ninety-one dwelling units of two or more families. Down, it says, in a separate bill, the median where foot is eight hundred and fifty-two. So, that's currently what's existing. So, I would hope that the regulations that you're proposing wouldn't make it.
Okay, so you'd like to see something larger as the, by rights to go at least a certain size? And then you go thirty percent beyond when that, that number doesn't.
Because if you have four thousand square foot pounds, thirty percent of that is a twelve hundred.
Yes.
That's a pretty large house, all things considered. So, I would like you to do that. And the other thing, going back to the smaller houses, and I don't think we have any of those, we don't have branches.
We don't have one?
I don't think we have neighborhoods in Columbia of branches that are close together. But the branches might be situated on three acres, things like this, situated on the back lawn, they might be situated in many number of places, but not necessarily.
A subdivision.
A subdivision. I really don't think we have any subdivisions.
So, let me, I don't need to put words in your mouth, I just, so you don't share the concern that I might have had that we might have changed the complexion of neighborhoods.
I do not.
Okay, we're very sensitive of that. I didn't think we would, but I wanted to know that we weren't. Because I didn't want to see a radical shift in the nature of our housing stock. Just wanted to give people more options, just didn't wanna take away from what this people like the place that we live.
And I certainly, I really appreciate that. But I can also appreciate perhaps an older couple who lives in a thousand square foot house, wanting to have a son or daughter be able to move into an accessory dwelling, maybe they don't, but maybe to have caretakers that might wanna move into the accessory dwelling, those hands. Maybe a thousand, you know, square feet is not fulfilling enough. And there's so many different architectural structures and ways that can be combined. People can put breezeways between two houses. Just giving options to people who have those.
Thank you very much. Anyone, anyone else, somebody in practice, Mr. Cabala?
Paul Cabala, thirty-seven Red Road. Um, what is the, uh, what is the lot size for a single family house?
Hundred and fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand?
That's the minimum lot size for a new, newly developed.
Well, just, yeah, everybody has. People are reporting to. Yeah. Okay, if, um, if I wanted to put in a larger accessory building at seven hundred and fifty feet, and I have a, under a two thousand square foot house, is it possible to go to planning and zoning and get get an increase to a higher, a higher rate, say like a hundred square feet, twelve hundred square feet?
Under our current regulations, no, you'd have to be.
Planning zoning, yeah, move that.
Well, if, we have to abide by our own regulations. And we make a regulation, so it doesn't give us the ability to say, yeah, we like you, we're gonna give you an exception to the regulations. No, no, seriously, I don't mean to be funny about it. We have to follow our own regulations. So, if we want, wanted the ability to make an exception to that, that would have to also be in our regulations, and that is not currently, to the best of my awareness of the regulation, I've read them enough times, I should be able to say there's a certain detail. You do have the option, though, to go zoning board appeals. To, to accept into regulations.
Okay, so, that goes along with what I was just asking then. It is possible if I go to appeal.
Right, or assert, there's, there's a lot of, that's a possibility. It just, just be aware, though, that on the, the decision making, and I don't wanna speak for the zoning board of appeals, but I can talk to the law in general. But it used to be, if it was a reasonable request, they, they could say yes. There, there's very strict interpretation of the fact that you have to prove a hardship, a unique hardship on the land. And it can't self propose to get a, to get a variance. So, the variance process is very difficult now, where it used to be very common in the past. But, and I believe you cannot use financial reasons as hardships, you gotta have some, not a hardship on the land.
No, it's not, uh, okay. If you're looking at your public hearing, you go on to uh, sentence ten, second from the last, you have a state of the state, market rate. What is market rate?
Market rate is an unregulated uh, offering to the public, whatever the developer wants to do. So, affordable is by this, the classic state definition. Uh, if they, they reserve some units, approximately thirty percent as, as being offered as affordable housing by the state definition, then they can, they can go to the maximum potential development, you know, of a multifamily development.
Okay.
I'll get somebody else. Yes.
Hi, Ruth Gordon at Rascal's Shop. Um, fifty-four changes, and I heard Lily said about the eight fifty, but I support going at least five hundred. Her name was, she built the accessible bathroom and hallways. You just need a little more space, you know, like their living space, somebody has to look around. I'd say at least nine hundred.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for your input. Anyone else? Yes.
Hi, Pete from South, Johnson Road. Um, I don't support any of these changes, I just believe that. Um, I moved to Columbia about fifteen years ago, for romantic, and um, I moved here because it's a small town, the low taxes, we can have police force, we don't have sewers, it's not crowded, there's a nice lake. And I feel that incentivizing lower income housing and higher population density is opening the door inevitably will change the character of the town. And I like to go to the lake and just enjoy it. And with a higher population density, there's going to be more people at the lake and our tiny beach. And by incentivizing lower income, we're also incentivizing all the problems that come with lower income. Eventually, are we gonna have saturated people eventually, is it? I feel this whole proposal is opening the door for everything uh, Justin said it's not. Eventually, with higher population, we'll need a police force, we'll need a regular fire department, we'll need a high school, we will need sewers eventually. And if a contractor can find a way to provide fresh water and sewage, then a ten acre lot, how many units could that possibly hold? And I don't have time to go to a public hearing for every single developer that wants to change the character of the town, make multi-figure. And eventually, I watched this happen in Wyndham, and now I don't live in Wyndham. Eventually, you know, the, gonna take a little, take a little, and it's not gonna be Columbia anymore. It's gonna be Manchester, or it's gonna be Vernon, it's gonna be Wyndham. And, you know, they have these large multifamilies in Wyndham, and last year, my mother's taxes were half what they are, but they doubled because of the problems associated with incentivizing lower, somebody's gotta pay more. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Yes.
And Catherine Monroe, twenty-seven Lake Road. I have the honor of chairman of the commission on aging for eight years. I can tell you with great assurance that there is a desperate need for alternate housing in Columbia.
Which is addressed, uh, commission.
For senior housing. That's affordable. People wanna stay in the town, they can't afford to stay in their large houses. They can't manage the lawns, they can't manage all of those things. They need a place to go, they should have a place to go. I can tell you that for eight years, we were trying to find a buildable piece of property that would accommodate some kind of multifamily usage for seniors, like I have eleven of them. And we had lot after lot after lot not being appropriate because of the high water table, because of ledge, because of all those things. So, unlike some of the other towns, we don't have the same buildable lots or buildable properties. So, that's not even in the realm of possibility. We do need places for people that need alternate housing here in town. Nine hundred square feet for me, and for what research we did, is the way to go because of handicap accessibility for bathrooms that have to be larger. If you have a caretaker, that has to be there, there has to be someone there, and usually another half bath because of that, and having that person there. So, we have a desperate need for affordable alternate housing in, in Columbia. And whether it is for seniors on fixed incomes, of which there are so many that you have no idea how many people are struggling in this town. Or you have young couples that have no place to start off with, that can't afford to get out of situations that maybe would like to be able to move and help their parents move into a smaller next door neighbor house. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Uh, John Millworth, uh, William Harris. Uh, I actually live in a nine hundred uh, square foot home, and I'm retired from cleaning. And the thing that's gonna drive me out, you know, I've lived here all my life, but the thing that's gonna drive me out is taxes in the United States. And the taxes go up again, you know, it's a consideration, you know, so you look at other states like so many other people are free to. I mean, you know, I guess I'll live in a board of house, they can. I mean, you know, I guess I'll live in a affordable housing. And I would like to stay here at least a little bit longer, but, I mean, taxes everywhere in Connecticut just keep going up, so. And the other thing that concerns me too is, you know, like just our main roads, like Route eighty seven and sixty six and six. I mean, I mean, it's like a train, you know, you could go down on six and it's like, uh, you know, there's no major through it here. There was supposed to be three eighty four that was supposed to run through the eastern part of the state and that got down years ago. So everybody uses Route six and Route sixty six. And I keep, I mean, pull up from what you wrote, like tonight I was going to UConn and, um, I mean. I'm waiting there two or three minutes before I can pull out because it's just constant streaming cars. Um, I pull out of the, I'm moving terrorist and, you know, I come down here towards seven and I go to the speed limit. And with thirty five, forty miles an hour, it's pretty fast, over the speed limit, and by the time I get to the center, I have a line of cars back for me already. You know, and I am a little bit concerned about that, that this is going to be very overwhelming. I mean, there's a reason why I live here, you know, um, you come back here and it's just like you exhale. Because it's, you know, it's quiet here and it's a farm, you know, it's a farm type community, it's a very rural community. And, you know, preserve that, uh, character, I think is very precious. And it's something we really need to guard, so.
Coming from the point of the square footage. Um, I just want to give everybody a little bit of an idea, besides the fact that it's been a certain percentage of the total square foot. For an accessory, uh, use, and we've had that, we've had that for years, we did develop the senior housing. Um, regulation, I would say, not help me, what, seven years ago? Yeah, um, the reason I think that there's sort of, I understand the. Wanting for bigger square footage, a lot of people want, they want, they want. Um, the problem, the problem being is we were trying to keep it, um, as a reasonable. Price to build square foot. I don't know if anybody's had an idea as far as we're talking about new construction and having somebody come in and building. These developments, right, I mean, we're not talking necessarily, I mean, if you wanted to build an accessory unit. You already had the opportunity to do it and you still will and to do that any time you want, but we're talking about these new developments. Um, for the seniors, it's. I mean, I priced that not too long ago, probably about three years ago, it was before COVID. Um, for a friend of mine, he wanted to build a small independent. Had the proper acreage, had all the, the utility possibility. And he's given a price of, um, of over two hundred and sixty dollars per square foot. So when you're talking affordable, um, at that rate, does somebody come in and build the thousand square foot unit? Instead of the seven fifty, I mean, the pricing structure goes absolutely nuts. And what we were trying to do by keeping it at the seven fifty is we were trying to keep it as affordable as possible. And as far as the, uh, square footage for the lots. Is, you have to keep in mind is that a lot of builders. When you're talking with construction. The smaller project, the reason is there isn't any newer homes that are built that are small unless somebody wants to take on that. Project themselves is if you talk to the builders, there's not enough traffic. In the house, they want to build a big house with the big rooms because. It doesn't last anymore because you're not putting up all these little walls to build on yourself. So it is, you know, it's, it's, it's a nightmare. With the big, with the big square footage, well, we're trying to keep it, um, in a smaller size to try and make it the least. More affordable for this construction.
And we have Mr. Cabal, see, John, you're, you're hand up.
Yeah, no, so I don't want to interrupt the, the, the public input, but I just wanted to clarify one thing, when everyone's talking about square footage, um. And square footage caps, uh, I just wanted to restate and clarify, um, that. While there is currently in the proposed regulation, uh, uh, thirty percent or seven hundred and fifty square feet. Cap on a detached accessory unit, um, if someone is interested in building, um, an addition. And basically a single structure with two units in it. Uh, which is to say not, not a separate detached structure, there is no square footage limit other than, uh, coverages and setbacks. So if someone wanted to add an accessory unit that was part of the original structure as an addition. Um, there is not that same square footage cap as proposed, so just to clarify that.
Another, anyone else that hasn't spoken yet? Yes.
So, um. This book was just said that the ten percent covered, you know, for me, that is the limit for me going in a property. So, you know, if you have a attached, you know, more than detached, you have the rest. Doesn't make a lot of sense to me, let me go live, I guess I can, even a lot of others. But anyway, um, that's not my main concern, so I want to ask about elevation and multifamily housing, is there going to be a different elevation requirement or limit for that? They can build as high as they want.
No, it can build subject to the, the limitations that are current in our regulations. Single family is thirty five feet. Uh, it, within the conforming setbacks.
Okay.
It has based on, uh, pre, uh, development average, um, perimeter excavation, uh. Average around perimeter of the proposed excavation.
Okay, and then there's the mention of having to have an engineer or someone scientifically based. Evaluate the adequacy of a lot for a multifamily or any addition, right? So we're gonna have to have someone in US, and it kind of doesn't have an inch meter. And I'm just wondering whether the regulations require that the town gets to choose the engineer while the. Advocate pays for it, is that the way you're planning?
That is still in the, in the proposed regulation, but generally a development proposal that is set forth to the town by special permit. The town does have the right to have it reviewed by its consulting engineer. And, uh, acting would have to pay for that review. So we do have a consulting engineer on retainer for the town. And we've done so little subdivision work lately, we probably haven't sent them much business, but. There were times when there was a lot of business going out to them as part of our development process.
So you would, what's an independent point of view on this new subdivision in multifamily?
Not an independent point of view, uh, retained town representative engineer to, to. Evaluate whether or not it's in fact a, a factually accurate.
Yeah.
Representation of the state of the land.
Okay.
And if this, if, if our current regulations don't support what I said exactly, John, please. Jump in, but I'm almost certain that's the, the exact way our regulations would unfold is.
Okay, and then you made a comment about, um, the use of the accessory building, not wanting to restrict it. For seniors or to low rent or whatever, it should have the older regulations about everything with there. So one may consider it to be restricted in terms of the length of buildings. So you don't end up with Airbnb's on both, on his backyard, so you want to have. Using their extra space for Airbnb, whether it's in the house or accessory building and so on. And now I'm asking whether you guys have a limit. They use in that one respect, not in terms of the age, you know, whether they're.
How would, what, we enforce that?
Well, it's, it's done nationwide now, because when these people come, they're there for a night or a week. They're, you know, making all the noise and disturbance and it's not part of the neighborhood anymore, like people said, you don't want. So the transit, whether you're in the neighborhood.
Based on our history with enforcement already. I wouldn't really doubt that we would want it.
To me, if you look at the town in general, you know, enforcement is very low. And, you know, if you have one neighbor complaining, they don't have to have an enforcement person, right? So, anyway, I'm just mentioning that as a, you know, concern.
John, what's that thought?
Yes.
You know, um, from a zoning standpoint, we, there are two legislative bodies in town, the, the planning commission. Uh, the planning zoning commission and the board of selectmen, uh, we don't have the right to impose fines. That would be something that. I, I, I hadn't thought of that when we were, we hadn't brought this up, we, um. But that might be something better enforced from the board of selectmen level. So that there were more teeth to enforce an ability to fine because most they would do is have a town ordinance. You have to have a fine, but how would you, how would you, you can't, you can't expect someone to give you a copy of their lease to find it.
The words are told when they get the accessory building or apartment approved, that you cannot have short term leases.
We, we don't have to get into the mechanics of it, at this point, you know, that's what we're talking about. But just being efficient here, um, but it's, it's a concept that I, I'm glad you brought it up, we didn't even think of about. About length of leases, we have absolutely, positively no way to enforce it. As a planning and zoning commission, so if it's something that it would be advisable for certain types of, of uses within town. Almost certainly, we would want to approach it from an ordinance standpoint, I, I would hope the board of selecting would agree with me on that. Yeah, I just don't, I don't see, we have a way to address that. And I, and the valid concern, I appreciate you bringing it up.
Okay, my, my last comment has to do with the lake area being exempt from the multifamily housing, right? So I'm very strong and you get in favor of any ratings. Um, we count what, if they have a compact regulation still a lake, it should be the whole town, they wouldn't be happy if they're the only ones paying for that. And saying they in reverse, so if these people are able to build thirty percent increase on their lot, right, you're laying with a big. More expensive houses built, more accessory buildings, right? And yet they don't have to have that concern about, you know, the water quality. It's the same to me as if you had a multifamily subdivision, you know, that, that thirty thousand increase in the lot will have as much impact on the lake. As having a multifamily or two family house coming in, you know, and. But there, remember the entire part where Astewama is and off there don't eat, there's a lot of undeveloped land in there. So, you know, you're limiting the ownership of that to. Well, they're getting a free life, so. It's, it's a, it doesn't need to be anything to me, the, the lady's going to get that except, so. That's my first of all. Okay, yes, I think I don't see how. Putting it off, as you said, you know, having incrementally influence in the lake area. To me, it just seems about the political thing, we're trying not to, sort of the point is, yes, we're going to hold the deadline, staying in town, well, thank you.
Thank you. Did anyone else who hasn't spoken yet? Yes, ma'am.
Charlie Bestry, oh, this is maybe just a question for clarification, talking a lot about the numbers of seven fifty and nine hundred. In terms of, um, in, in terms of mess, so to, to bear the point about affordability. If someone can build, uh, and, and dwellings that, and it's met. Their needs are met by seven hundred and fifty and that's financially what they can do. They can do that regardless of whether the, the maximum is nine hundred or not, right, so. Doesn't take that seven fifty out of the table, and someone being able to do it is just. It more as needed for someone than nine hundred might be more than one place. Is that right?
Yeah, we're not inundated, you need minimum. Again, the state of Connecticut did away with minimum house size requirements. That, that is, um, still enforceable in subdivisions that have covenants that are private, uh, private agreements. Between the, uh, people that build in a subdivision and whatever rules the subdivision has. But in general, it's zoning regulation that says you have to build a minimum house size of X, no longer X. I think it always used to be six hundred. Don't remember that, I thought it was nine hundred, but, but they don't remember. I may be thinking, it's still in the regulation, I believe, which is. Just one at a time, at least, just now, you recognize that you could.
You want me to recognize myself?
You know, I'm asking, I think you asked before.
When you were talking about work earlier before, um, just so you know, um, I had lived in a house that. We had, the current regulations was seven hundred square feet and the upstairs of the house was totally unfinished or was not habitable. Um, and I, I did live there for, um, seven years and, and. I enjoyed it, I thought it was, I thought it was enough square footage for, for two people, but everybody's different.
Yeah, we started out seven hundred, we were buying out, right, so, 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 yeah, it's only good, so, I guess I would just.
Anyone else who hasn't spoken yet?
Karen Freeman, H R Valley Road. I did submit a letter in March in support of these, um, proposed changes or these regulations. Um, I guess I do think, you know, the nine hundred square feet seems to be. Um, more in line with whomever wants to put that size on the lot, regardless of the size of their house. Really seems that you could put a garage. Um. Uh, thirty by thirty garage on any. Uh, uh, your home, in addition to your home. And that is kind of in keeping with nine hundred square feet. So I think also, um. You know, I, I mean, a lot of people tell me as a social worker. And I do home care and I see a lot of people who have to have somebody living with them. In our aging population, I think connect kids like six in the country, the people for a certain age into the senior world. And it's imperative, I think that we make plans for the war sandwich generation, we have people. We have kids who might want to live with us. Or on the property and we also have, uh, you know, our parents. That we are, you know, looking at, um, living with us, so I think having these options is really imperative. We support that, we support.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who hasn't yet spoken?
I'm Nancy Wong, I live forty seven, maybe, I have a coffee, I don't know. And I've been a member of the commission on aging, four, eight years and have been with our chair. Um, I just want to reiterate what she was speaking to, I've worked with older adults my entire life. And I think we have to stop and think where many of the people who've lived here for many, many years. Have volunteered for positions such as you are all on, given their time, helped out in the school system. And at that point in time, what they were earning was good money and they may have put a lot of savings together. But it's all relative and as time has gone on, that money isn't worth what it was. So they find them in a, themselves in a position where. That's where they want to see more affordable housing, that they can afford and still remain in the town. That they've lived in and have enjoyed living here. And I also want to speak to the, I also agree, the nine hundred, at least is the maximum. I agree with because I understand what you were speaking to as far as how much room you need. But there are people, whether they're getting older, if they need a wheelchair. The, the, just the handicapped accessible bathrooms. Required quite a bit of room for people to be able to maneuver, maneuver around it, so. I think that's where it would be helpful to have that latitude, um, of space. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your input. Anyone else who hasn't spoken yet? Yes.
Hi, I'm Ryan, I'm speaking to have, on behalf of Coalition University of Equity. First, I want to again thank you to the planning and zoning board, uh, division committee. For your conscientious and thoughtful work and for welcoming our participation in the meetings. It was really evident to us that while we attended those meetings, the committee makes its decisions with the best. But the current high interest rates and construction costs for post-erelating are welcome. They offer a great opportunity to make more affordable housing options possible, we've already heard from everybody else about seniors, young people in town. People who work in town and want to be able to live here and can't afford to come here, stay here or having to leave here. All these changes will support our community. And we wholeheartedly support the regulations, we would also like to see. The, um, maximum for the detached, uh, A and B. The minimum, sorry, the minimum, yes, uh, be nine hundred square feet, um. It's only, you could build a mass, it's that. I think, uh, you know, as, as Karen pointed out, build a thirty foot, thirty foot. Build a thirty foot, thirty foot garage. Under property, um, and it seems inconsistent, it's been built with attached A and B. And especially given all the comments about how little land there is. I think it's really important to have as many flats. So we respectfully request that planning and zoning improves the proposed regulations with that one.
Excuse me, question for you, you know, if the Department, State Department of Housing. For the elderly, portion of that has a minimum sizes. I don't know, but still, it might be something worth looking into, so. I mean, nine hundred square feet seems arbitrary, my, my mind, people, oh, if we had said nine hundred, somebody would say, oh, a thousand. Um, there's no, again, we're trying to have this scientifically based. So if the Department of Housing, for example, in the U S or state, has some minimum sizes for two bedroom units. That would be awful. Connecticut Department of Housing, it used to finance all of the housing projects, there's one in Ashford, there's one in Pomford. Those had one bedroom units and two bedrooms. There were service sizes that the state required for those projects. I don't know if they still do, I can't remember what they were. So it might be wise for somebody to, to look it up and figure it out. Instead of arbitrarily, arbitrarily saying nine hundred square feet or seven fifty or whatever it is.
We did start nine hundred, I'm looking at some different architectural plans and looking at, and didn't figure out there. But it wasn't based, it's based on what we have in.
I mean, that's, that's fine, I do know, for example, a handicap bathroom. Can be basically seven by ten, just seven square. A little bit larger, we said, the twelve, which would be four square. I know that, I know, I know a hand, a handicap bathroom without a, without a ba- without a bathtub or a shower. Is seven foot long by seven. That's a minimum requirement for that, I know that. I just, and if you have three feet for a, 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 a shower then it makes it ten feet. So I can figure that out, I just, I'm interested to know if there are standards. Sizes, minimum sizes, whatever, for two bedroom.
Still help.
Because the plans you look at, will they come from Connecticut or will it come from other states?
They were from various architectural firms that, that were. I think we tried. Um, and from other, they weren't state, they were from architectural firms that aren't same.
So other states may have regulations for sizes, I'm just wondering, yes, Connecticut, if it had. But you. I mean. We're just trying to get a number that makes sense scientifically. Regular.
Well, and. Been, had to do in terms of, well, reasonable money for them.
Yeah, just. Anyone else saying not spoken yet? I'll go back to people that have spoken, if you'd like to say, say something else. This is all.
I decided that I'll just.
Okay, anyone else? John?
Yes, that's the same, yes, John Hill, twenty three, Carsville Road. So I'm used to how it can be used about this, that it would. Your, your accessory building can be, the multi-family housing will have a ten percent lot, that's. Once taken bill, if you own a house and you add an addition, ten percent is what you have in terms of how big you can get it. But we have.
Broken form of the lot, it's a ten percent lot coverage, man.
Yeah, well, a lot of that is probably a lot, but anyway. The, um, what we're talking about now is accessory building. Why is there this need, is that, is that a limit? I don't understand why, can't just be ten percent lot, which is like any other situation that you're, you know.
We, because our original accessory dwelling unit. Concept was that small, the small accessory dwelling unit was permitted. Kind of had its origins in state regulations that said, here's some regulations, if you don't do anything about this, we're going to impose these on you. So we were one of the first towns I knew of to act on coming up with our own accessory dwelling units. Unit, uh, regulation, based on input from our then town planner, on what the state proposed, that didn't seem to make sense to us. And we didn't want to see in our regulation. So many times it comes from a reaction to. External information, so I, it's hard to explain the rationale of all the people that were involved in. Us enacting an accessory dwelling unit regulation initially. But we were very early to the table, just like we're, I've never heard of a town using science to decide what you can build in terms of the number of units. On a piece of property. It's so utterly logical, but it's totally different. No, 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 no. Other regulations say you can do X number of units per acre, and if you can't get to that number. You can't get to it. What we're saying is, why come up with an arbitrary number? Not justified in science, you're going to judge it by science and then back away from that.
For the accessory housing.
No, this is for the whole family.
Okay, anyone with a comment about people who are concerned about the town changing its character? So I think the one thing with planning zone really has to commit itself to, but everything else is to keep private order, private stepping. Forever, because what's going to happen is, as you get this density and people say, I want to build a house, you know. In a smaller area, they're going to say, well, you have to move through. And then everyone has a sewer, then you're packing, and all that. So, you know, as long as that's in your plan of conservation development. That's a primary goal of the town, to maintain private order and stepping, then we're good.
I can't project down the road for other people and that their thoughts, but we, we need that. Just knowing what it costs to bring sewers into a town like Columbia to the nearest, uh, uh, um, interactive process, the outgoing.
For the commercial zone, that sort of discussed numerous times, about bringing it out.
It hasn't happened. And so, and, and so for it to, to come off the hill into the mainstream Columbia is almost. Be comprehensive. Yeah, the only way. The only, the only way, I mean, Columbia was a mandate of. It mandated in other, other towns, in other neighborhoods. Yeah, I just don't, we didn't see that as something that we felt a need to address. Because every, I think everybody that we talk to in town has a similar perspective. They don't, you know, any need for it, they don't want to see a need for it. They don't want it impacting the town in that way. Um, just something so far outside the realm. Uh, of possibility that we haven't really addressed it. So, yes.
After your last comment.
For the record.
Oh, you have to. After your last comment, I'd like you to think about handsome.
Who did not have a nutrient allocation in plan for twenty five years and. Very different scientific facts, and that's not what this public hearing is about. So I'm wanting to keep on track, I want to keep the points that this public hearing is about.
I'm, I'm just saying, never say never.
Any other comments, yes, Mr. Cabal?
Paul Cabal, thirty seven, Ray Road. Uh, what time limit on speaking? I thought you mentioned it when we first committed.
I, I wanted to not be here till midnight. I have a fair amount of discretion and my people were, there was flowing and weren't a lot of other hands up. I use my discretion to try and move people fairly in time.
Well, you seem like we're not, we're not going by that rule.
Yes, we are.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you think you have your, your.
While I am in support of zoning. I think there's, there's a need, I'm not, I'm not the favorite. But I am supporting it because I think you do need it. Because if you don't have zoning on your lots, small lots, big lots. Accessory units, whatever, you're going to have a real high five of buildings in this town. So in that respect, I want to support zoning. Even though I don't like.
Thank you. Yes, um, we, we'll get back to you.
Uh, Charlie West Street, I do want to say that I really appreciate that the board's work and the subcommittee's work. Because I think it's really smart to try to figure out something that works for Columbia. Or something is mandated by the state that may not be.
It's million.
And I also like.
Just for the record.
Millie, we see from, I'm hungry. To think about. Um, I too would like to say thank you for the diligence. That you've done all year in coming up with these regulations. Commission on Aging has been in existence in this town for a long time. And in two thousand and six. The Commission on Aging did a survey. In two thousand and fifteen, the Commission on Aging did another survey. And the issue was Paul Lee's senior husband. So I'm glad you're looking at them, but, um. There's many concepts, as John mentioned, a philosophical change. I think that philosophical change is not only for those of us who live in Columbia and have a view of. What Columbia's character is. But also a philosophical change on what people need to be able to stay in this community. And so I'm thankful that you looked at them and that you're thinking about it. Um, I think if I could afford to build a twelve hundred square foot accessory dwelling. And if it's a regulated government property and I'm staying in Columbia, I'd want to be able to do that. So I would hope that your regulations wouldn't include other people from doing that. One, if they import it, two, if it fits. The regulations for setbacks, road advantage, all of those things. So that's it, but thank you very much.
Just, just of note, um, I've heard this theme from a lot of people. When we have our revision of our plan, Plan of Conservation and Development that we did approximately five years ago. Four years ago, and we're mandated by state statute to do every ten years. The, one of the things that left the most lasting and crediting when we received public comment. For the, during the public hearings we have for the revision of the Plan of Conservation and Development. For. Individuals that were. Over fifty five years old, saying, we want a place that at some point in our lifetime we can rent. And live in, in Columbia, and don't want to leave and we don't want to be land, landlord, landlords. And going back twenty five years and fifteen years again, I went out and I actively went to other developers. Uh, developers of that type of housing, saying, we have some land here that we need help with this rezoning if our mind is open. How do we, how do we do this for you? How do we help you? Get this so that you have that as something to offer to our community? I haven't been able to get any of them. To do that, and this is another attempt to make an environment. That's more hospitable to that type of potential development, whether it's senior or non-senior. It has become less material as the cost of housing has exploded. You know, it's, how do we help the public afford a place to live? Yes, seniors, and whether it's living by renting or living by owning, that's something we're trying to address. We just want more opportunity for the public. Because, you know, I, I know everybody needs it. And so how do we open this up? Inevitably, some small section of our complexion of the town can change their bid. Do I see a huge increase in density coming? I guess, I, I had a public commission, the, the, the subcommittee members. We didn't think there was even a remote chance of that, because there's so little available land here. So how do we let people use their property in a way that helps extend their stay in Columbia? That's really what motivated this and. And how do we take away some of the overhead of dealing with regulations by having more expansive and easier to understand regulations? And one of the reasons we didn't approach the watershed, the later overlay zone, was we felt it's kind of a lot of work. Studying it, because it's such a precious resource to this town, that we need a lot more time. To study it. Yet we still, we felt a compelling need to move the, the bar forward. And that's where we are with this, and we just protect what we have. Spend the opportunities for the, for the people that are here, the people that want to be here. So that's where we are intellectually on this, emotionally on this. I don't think anybody more than myself wants to protect the. The feeling we have in this town. Now, I just don't want to see, I want to wake up one day, I really respect what you said about. Your perspective on Columbia, and I appreciate your comments, and we listen carefully to everybody. Anything else anybody else would like to say on. On these regulations, I would propose, we do not close the public hearing tonight. We let it extend to our next regular meeting. With the idea that unless there's some other compelling testimony, we would probably then close it. That our practice in the past has been not to close a public hearing and then go two weeks to our next meeting and then discuss things. Because we don't want to. We want to, want the ability to take in more information. If you heard something here and somebody said, you know, I'm going to go out and find out what the minimum housing is, but based on statute. We want to be able to take that information in, where we would be included, taking that in from the public and closing the public hearing tonight. So if, absent any other need for testimony, yes, ma'am.
The question. Maggie Wong, forty seven, Route eighty seven. Um, in some areas of the country. For the accessory dwellings, they have actively allowed and encouraged pretty fabricated. There's anything that we're talking about.
Nothing in our regulations, we don't have that. If, if it's a man, if it's a. A modular or manufactured, but a mobile home on a metal chassis, our regulations don't. So no.
They think that you have fabricated can be a little less costly because it's not being done out in the elements and everything.
And our regulations don't limit what you can do with the dark. As it needs to build. Good question, though, thank you for bringing that up. Anything else from anyone else? Ms. Rand.
Rachel Ramsey, um, and Bob, you brought up a really good question. They use like estimates or I'd like people on the zoning board to also try and research that in the next two weeks. And answer that.
We all have internet. Really good. Uh, with that said, I suggest that we, um, continue this public hearing for our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is July. You know, thanks for everything, I mean, thanks for sharing this and everything, I'm just trying to understand why it's always like you. Thank you, you did a great job, thank you, thank you. We're going to get back into our regular meeting. Um, for the twenty year, we do have no in public hearing. It's very important that nobody takes any input from the public of any sort whatsoever. No casual conversation, stop job about this going on in the public hearing. All of our information that the commission has come in through the public hearing. All of our information that the commission has come in through the public hearing.
You think it would be appropriate, while you got, somebody's researching this stuff about now. What we researched and gained a little bit better. Food for public is to what involved in actually getting a building permit to do one. Having built homes in Columbia. To, if you're gonna have a structure with two bedrooms, we're talking about new set system in addition to the one that's already set for the.
So.
Outlet three.
Okay, does anybody you should know it, but.
Yeah, I will, I will refer to talk.
Yeah, talk for listening here as well as criteria.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, I don't think anybody can really. Get to that part.
Uh, you know, I don't.
People were focusing on. On the other things that limit the building.
I'm gonna get this back. Okay, we're not gonna talk about this anymore. Okay, okay, I'm done. Everybody, wait. Thank you. So, uh, item seven, there's no, no action for this. Public hearing continues. Um, I have a side note, John. I know that we did receive some email communication, we received copies of them. If you have any thoughts, you need to read them in the record. You can do that. I don't think you need to.
No, I I I think. Um, yeah, and Mary, I believe Mary Kay has made copies of all those so the commissioners can see. Uh, the the publicly submitted documents that were submitted by email. I, if you just want to. Uh, request that Mary Kay, um, note them in the minutes. That, you know, the, the, the letters of, letters of testimony submitted by. You know, these, these five people or whatever, just, just note that.
Okay. Should that then? John, under new business, uh, we've got the open space referral on Route sixty six. Anything you want to speak to on that?
Um, so just as a reminder, if I, I don't know. When the last time we did an eight twenty four, actually, I think last eight twenty four referral we did was for. Uh, maybe the HVAC upgrades at the, uh, school. Um, but there is, and I'm going to put this, uh, up on the screen. Hopefully people can, let's see, there we go. Can you see that? Um, so, uh, an eight twenty four referral refers to the state statute. Um, section eight dash twenty four, which basically requires any time a municipality makes a significant investment. Acquires or divests of land, acquires an interest in land such as easement, um, expands roads. Sewer water lines, et cetera. Um, it is obliged to present that proposed acquisition or improvement. To the planning commission, um, and have the planning commission comment on the proposed investments. Um, applicability or 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 harmony with the goals of the plan of conservation and development. Um, so that is why this is before you this evening. In this case, this is a proposed acquisition. Of open space land, uh, by the town of Columbia. Um, and this is a. Uh, a. A piece of land on Route sixty six. It's, it's, um, three thirty Route sixty six. Um. There, it's approximately twenty three acres of land. That's to be split off of, uh, an existing house lot of about three and a half, or be three and a third acres. Um, and again, it it is on Route sixty six. It contains currently a, uh, current cell tower. Um, but it backs up to Town of Columbia land, the recreation, um, park. Um, it backs up to that, to this property. So it would connect to, um. Route sixty six and, uh, would also allow for a small. Pull off area of, um, you know, gravel parking, uh, to allow people to park and enjoy. The forest and and the, um, open space. And again, sort of access through the woods to the recreation park, basically. To expand the town's open space, uh, holdings. Um, and so the, um, selectmen and the town manager have sort of worked out an agreement with the, um. Current owner, uh, the, we would leave the driveway. Access, um, that there is an easement to the tower itself, that is, that is deeded to the tower, um. Even though the underlying land, uh, is currently privately owned and would be publicly owned. Um, the tower would not be disturbed and the, and the driveway, uh, access to the tower would not be, uh, disturbed.
Yes, please. Um, if if a town buys this property, you will own the tower lease.
The. Who, would, would the town, would the town inherit the tower lease? Is that the question? Yes.
Yes.
That, that's correct. I, I don't know the, I don't know the financial details of it, but it would be, you know, it would, it would, it would acquire. The ownership of the land and and would, you know, be the leaseholder.
And how much is the perfect price?
Um, my understanding is it's a standard, the, the town has traditionally paid about two thousand dollars an acre for open space. Um, I can't attest to the final number, but that, that was my understanding with, from my communication with the town manager. So in, in rough numbers, we're, we were talking about forty five thousand dollars.
Yeah. You're having a hard time visualizing exactly where this is.
Oh, if you want, I can, I could put up a, a, a aerial photo also if you'd like.
That would be great. It's very knowledge spread. It's a brush east from the area. What, the car skis?
Even though in states, she knows.
Yes, if you could, I would appreciate it.
The cell phone tower. This is not the, the clean. When that the tower and drive. The. Previous on. The car ski. When they made the. Made the agreement to, uh, uh, with. They did not lease anything yet. They still. So we, that are we not. They. It's just the footprint of the cell phone tower.
So we don't. No ability to get income from it.
We do not get income from it. And we cannot then. Um, share. Because we've looked at all.
And have it be totally non-conforming.
How is that legal?
Did you say? It isn't legal.
It, it's done, it's done fifty years.
We still have so long to use.
Nineties two, I think, so thirty, thirty years ago. So, John, where is this on Route sixty six? I have no idea. It's connected to the, uh, what it's looking, uh, you know, part, but it will. Okay, I think I see it now.
I'm sorry.
And there was a. Um, purchase of land on the other side. With. The brand funds. Yeah, it's being this one. Together, the pink car ski. It's the, yeah, that was. And this property is on the underside of the.
Okay. So it, it applies, um, rec park, town wants it. Any thoughts that it's not appropriate for the town? Go for. You can put, you can put some walking trail in. And it's cheap. Okay. Absent, any other thoughts? I'll make a motion that we approve the eight dash twenty four referral by the comment. I'll make a motion that we approve the eight dash twenty four referral by the comment of, uh, Columbia on this land act. Any discussion? Other than favor? So it's. Okay. Okay. Uh, John, you want to speak to this? So, um, we're bringing up that, uh, technically we need to appoint an interim zoning officer. Um, and, uh. And I, I take it that Sarah Savannah is not, uh, starting immediately or?
She, I believe, uh, today was her first. Day, um, I don't think she was in the office. I think she was.
Appointing an interim zoning officer.
But yeah, I, I think it's, um, it's, she's starting today. Um. I think she, uh, has, I mean, I, I, for folks who haven't gotten a chance to meet her. Um, she has some experience as a wetlands enforcement officer. Um, particularly in Massachusetts, um, needs to get up to speed a little bit with, with Connecticut zoning regulations. So I think it would be wise to, um, while she's getting up to speed and being trained by Manuel. Um, who is my colleague, um, and who has been serving as interim zoning officer, that you, you just formally appoint them both. Um, so that they can, they can work in tandem and alongside myself. And I've, I've, um. Been working on zoning enforcement, uh, this last, this last, uh, several weeks as well. Um, just to, to make sure that you've got coverage and all of the folks that are having their, their. Hands in the zoning right now are, are legally empowered to do so.
And so we did have an interview process. So we did, there was an interview process. John, uh, our town adminis-, uh, is Mark. Our town administrator and myself interviewed, uh. Savannah. And we didn't feel the need to pursue anyone else. We were very. Taken with her depth and intellect and so. And the potential that have somebody was in continuity here. So we. Got very fortunate as a town. And so. Um, there, there were, I believe, were four. Uh, and I believe there were some preliminary interviews on two others. One was not qualified. So I, I sat in on the interview with Savannah. I was very impressed with her. Um, we weren't on the table. But we're all very impressed with her. So she was offered the position. Uh, no, she, John, she's not certified, but she will, she will become certified, correct?
Correct. She's gonna go through the training.
And John is currently certified, so we have a certified individual to sign off on things. And so. Manuel, well, he had been serving as our interim and will continue to help train. Uh, Savannah, uh, I, I think it's gonna be a very natural fit. So I will be interfacing with her in the coming weeks about what her history has been. She, she aware of some of that. And what it is we're looking for the commission from her to help us. Enforce our regulations. So I'll make them, any, any other comments or questions? So I'll make a motion that we appoint Manuel Medina as our interim zoning officer and Savannah. McEnville as our new, um, zoning officer. Here, so you say, all, any discussion about that? And I'm happy to answer questions about the interview process. All who is in favor?
The only reason I just want to make a comment, the only reason I asked how many applicants you had was because in the past, everybody said that, um. To find someone for the senior position was so difficult. So I wanted to see if you actually had. Could we actually have been sparse to the position?
That's a very, that's a good question. Okay, so all of the favor? All right, so that's unanimous. Thank you so much. Thank you, Justin. That went well tonight. Thank you. You don't have to ever come to another meeting again. You can just.
I, I feel bad not being there, Greg.
Okay. Uh, let's pass over regulation revisions, nothing we need to cover today. Uh, John, anything? Anything from the commission, open discussion? Uh, citizens, anything? Uh, no executive session, I'll make a motion. I was the first. All of your favor, that's unanimous. Period, you're right.
Night, everybody.